February 2022, USD 350 Board of Education meeting in order. Welcome visitors. Any additions or changes to the agenda?
I have no changes.
Mr. President, I move the board approve the agenda as presented.
Sorry. It's been moved and seconded that we approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The same side, motion carried. Consent agenda.
You have the information for the consent agenda there. I have nothing unusual to report on that.
Mr. President, I move the board approve the consent agenda as presented.
Sorry. It's been moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The same side, motion carried. Patron comments. Alright, thank you. Business items, first item, COVID protocols.
I really have nothing to discuss here other than the Kansas Department of Health and Environment issued a 30-day suspension of contact tracing and quarantine requirements in schools and 30 days came and went last week and we've heard nothing about anything moving forward, so we're, I guess, still in that holding pattern. Things have been going very well. We haven't had any issues at all. Still cases pop up here and there, but things are rolling right along, so I don't have any information to give you other than that, so.
Okay. Thank you. What are policy updates?
You do have the policy updates in a separate document. So this is the first look at our policies. There's a letter there from Kansas Association of School Board Attorneys. These are policies twice a year that we look at. Their attorneys look at, update if there's new information or edits they find that need to be adjusted. And then they give the policy and then the rationale for the recommendation and what we should do. They all look fine to me. I don't see any issue except for this IIA. This is a policy about awarding credit, basically a test out. I know all the information for this class. I can take a test and get credit for it. We don't do that in our school, so we don't even have that policy, so we wouldn't be amending a new policy, so otherwise the policies that are listed there, six of them other than that one, the changes that they have noted there, I don't see any issue with, so. Any questions about that initially? The plan would be to let you chew on those for the next month and we can update them, approve them at the next meeting, so.
Okay. Financial software.
You have the long agreement here for our financial software, so this is what we use for our budgeting, our personnel, HR, all of that, timekeeping, employee clock in and clock out, our activities fund. This would all be under this one umbrella. Right now, we still have our activities fund accounting down the old system, which has been obsolete for six or eight years. It still works okay, but it's not really supported if we have issues with it. We're kind of on our own. This will bring everything all together. So it's not cheap. We did this in 2014, I think was the last time we updated. So implementation, setup, training, all of that is one-time cost, so you're looking at $11,080 for that, and then annual fee is $13,319. Down here, it's actually just a little bit more, just a little over $100 a year more for the ongoing costs, so it's really comparable. Alisa and Marla and Jennifer would really be the ones that use that. Jennifer on the accounting side, or activities fund side, Marla and Alisa with everything else.
We're like, there's three schools left on after Fund III in the state of Kansas, so if that tells you anything, like they're gonna get rid of it, so we're eventually going to have to update, so.
And now would be the time.
And the newer one is a lot more efficient, the reports are easier to pull up. There's a lot of pluses to it.
The last time we went through this transition, we had our financial software was housed on our server. We had all the data that would work with the software. When we moved to the new system in 2014, they house all the data, and it was quite a process to convert all of that. This would be more smooth, because they're housing the data, they'll still house it, just be upgraded to the new system, so. There are other systems out there. I don't believe it's worth pursuing a new system. There would be not as much, there would be a lot more implementation and training costs to go with a different vendor, and one of them I know, Skyward, is more expensive. We did look at that when we switched our student information system. So my recommendation is to approve the.
When would you do this, during the summer, convert over?
Probably, there would probably be a time in the spring when they're starting to convert, but yeah, the goal would be to make that switch July 1.
Okay.
It's supposed to be an easy transition from what they say, so.
And for you all, the reports might look a little different. The main thing is Alisa and Marla and the work they do. That's where the work is.
Mr. President, I move that the board approve the after fund agreement with the initial cost $11,080 and the annual cost of $13,319.
Sorry. It's been moved and seconded that the board approve the after fund agreement with the initial cost of $11,080 and annual cost of $13,319. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The same side, motion carried. 2021-22 calendar. Would that be 22-23?
Yes, it should be.
Is this the first time you looked at the board packet?
I'm talking to all of you.
We know, we're just gonna see you.
So sorry for that oversight.
Yes, it should be next year's calendar. Page 51. So this was a fairly easy calendar committee meeting. We have a couple of teachers appointed by the Teachers Association that serve on that committee. Pretty happy with our current setup of the calendar. Mrs. Knight is one of those representatives. Very similar to this current year. We wanted a day coming back. This will be a holiday anyway for a lot of our classified staff. It just feels like we end the semester and then start the new semester with no time to meet and do anything with our staff, so having that day when we come back in January. And then typically when we have parent-teacher conferences, there's a day off, like here in October. We have our parent-teacher conferences in the evening and then we take off that Friday. It's not required by any means, it's just something that we've done, and this current draft here has the two parent-teacher conference days and no day off, because we're right against spring break. I guess the option would be we just extend in May, so the committee thought, let's just keep it the way it is in May and we'll leave the school on that day. Does have two weeks at Christmas. The spring break matches up with Board of Regents schools and probably a lot of school districts in the state. So we try to have some professional development time with our teachers once a month. We have a few full days in there, and then at the end of each quarter, we have a half of professional development day and half a workday for teachers to finalize the quarter grades and everything. And then on those months that we don't have anything, like in April, we do an early dismissal. We have some committee work time or professional development time, so.
Mr. White?
Mrs. Knight, anything to add on that? Okay, so we're getting feedback from teachers and see where we're at on that, and we'll bring back a final draft.
Something to think about is the Midwestern Classic. If we get a full schedule, it's gonna take up more time during the day.
Yeah.
Would that be a day to maybe take off, move a date to that time period?
Actually, I think Midwestern Classic is this week here, isn't it? At 16?
Yes.
Yeah, so we have that Friday off for professional development? I think we had that this year, didn't we? Can we have a Friday off? And we try to do our professional development days on Friday, because if we take a Monday, that affects our preschool. They have a minimum number of hours. They usually don't attend on Friday, so if we take off another day, then they're off on Monday and Friday and they have to add more Fridays. January professional development, we do not do that on Martin Luther King Day. A lot of school districts have Martin Luther King Day as a staff development day, so it's hard to schedule any presenters on that day, and we think it's appropriate to be in class and learn about those things. It's not necessary to take the day off, but that question's come up before. So any other input between now and then, feel free to let me know.
Okay, thank you. Report on the curriculum and schedules.
I don't have a lot here. Just want to make sure that the board understands our basic schedule and curriculum of what goes on during the day. Elementary-wise, we have PE and music to get 30 minutes a day for all elementary grades. Band starts in fifth grade. Our core classes, those teachers' schedule, math, English, reading, science, social studies, as their schedule allows for the most part. MTSS is multi-tiered systems of supports. That's where we have targeted instruction if students are struggling in reading or if they just need enrichment in reading, meeting the needs of those kids. So nothing magical about that schedule. Course schedule for junior high and high school, seventh grade electives, they do art and computers. Eighth grade, they do industrial arts and family consumer science.
Junior high, all the core in the morning, or in the first, yeah, in the morning, electives.
Yeah.
Any house progress? Are you gonna keep three straight hours for the shop that we're working over there?
If we can, yeah.
That's the intent.
Scheduling is difficult, but yeah, that's the goal.
Part of that will depend on how many students we have, you know, enroll and how many of them will multiple hours.
Anything else looking at, maybe considering additions?
Yeah, we're looking at adding a few things in our business department, really. Looking at a banking and finance, social media, networking, internet marketing type class, which will include some broadcasting as well. Trying to think what else we talked about, but there's about four different classes that we're exploring, you know, student interests on, to try and build that business department a little bit there.
So I don't anticipate any major curriculum overhauls or additions or anything like that, that would require board approval, but. Any questions about any of that?
I guess the possibility of JAG is too.
Oh, right, right. Classified staff, we've talked.
This issue has come up just because we've had such an unusual year with, you know, we had the, we've taken eight days between air conditioner issue, five days for COVID, and two snow days. It's in our policy that we provide leave time, two days of leave time for emergencies like snow days for our classified staff. Our certified staff, they don't work those days and they still get paid for those days. And it's been a burden on our classified staff, which is our lowest-paid folks, so I'm asking the board consider adding two more days. We got people using up all their sick leave, because we've missed so many days and we're not really gonna make a lot of those up. We've got two that we're gonna make up, but still a good chunk that are running out of sick leave, so my recommendation is to add two days of paid leave time just for this year. It's kind of an unusual year. In a typical year, we offer them two days and we have three snow days, they take a sick day for that third one, but with having so many.
So you're just paying them all two days right up front?
Not, well, they can use those, that leave time, yes. So adding, it's adding to their leave time.
So if we don't have another snow day or anything, they can just take it for whatever?
They can take sick leave, yeah. So what they've done is, out of those eight days, we gave them two and they've taken six in sick leave, and they only get 10 a year. And cost, not all classified staff need them anyway. Like our custodians, they come in on the snow days and days were closed anyway. Food service staff, they don't work when the kids aren't here, or on the snow day or the COVID days. So no, it's not just paying them two days extra, it's really more the leave time. It'd be less than $2,000 cost to the district.
Is everything carried over?
Everything. For leave time, their personal leave does not carry over. Sick leave carries over up to so many days. This inclement weather leave, the emergency leave, does not carry over. It's just each year they have two days. If we call out school for an emergency, they have those two days.
I don't have a problem.
Go ahead, Debbie.
Go ahead, Debbie.
I was just getting ready to make motion.
Go ahead.
Mr. President, I move that the board approve the addition of two days of paid leave, time for emergency leave for classified staff for the 2021-22 school year.
Sorry. It's been moved and seconded that the board approve the addition of two days of paid leave time for emergency leave for classified staff for the 2021-22 school year. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The same side, motion carried. Jobs for America's Graduates.
So Jobs for America's Graduates is a program that helps with, get kids to graduate and be successful after high school. Blaine, you want to share kind of what you've learned, talking with representatives?
The regional director came and visited with us the other day. Kind of what they work on is, they have a criteria, not every student can take it. They have a criteria they can take it. It's probably not for our 4.0 students, it's probably not for the kid who just is not doing well because they refuse to do anything. Most of the time, it's the kids who genuinely struggle, maybe aren't on a college path, but just generally struggle but are at risk. So they have these criteria, it's kind of by a referral, and then the parents sign up an agreement along with the student to be involved in it. And it is a class, it's a, they would be in it for one period each day, but it teaches different soft skills for jobs with interviewing, teaches presentation skills. Trying to remember the five things Patrick went over with us there, but there's five different areas that they really focus on that help with those, that help with the students to round them out to be able to be ready to go on to the next level. And some of them do go on to college. They have a very high graduation rate, like a 98% graduation rate out of the JAG program. It's a nationwide program. Kansas right now has about 40 schools. This time next year, they'll be at about 100 schools, so it's growing pretty fast in Kansas. I've talked to three different schools who have it, to the principals, and all three of them have said, if you have an opportunity to get it, you should jump in. They go to different competitions, like this year, they have a competition in Great Bend on the 2nd, I believe, of March, where they'll present what they've done as far as community service, because there's a 10-hour community service component that goes along with it. Some of them will present an entrepreneurial opportunity where they've created a business plan. They'll do public speaking, there'll be an interview, like they're going in for job interviews, be mock interview process, and they grade them on how well they did, and it's a, they make a competition out of it. So kids can be in it every year of high school, or if we choose junior high and high school, and then JAG stays with them for a full year afterwards. It also helps them with budgeting knowledge, helping them make decisions, you know, if they're gonna go buy a car, helping them with that process and to determine what's good and what's not. So overall, it just helps build those skills at a higher level in the next, in another group of those students that sometimes we don't reach with that. So I guess Mr. Meyer can probably, were you gonna talk about our options for getting in?
Yeah, so here's, this is the presentation that the regional director sent. This is a presentation that he uses with administrators and counselors when they're starting in the program. So this is kind of some of what Blaine just mentioned. So there would be a specialist that works in our buildings, that has kids in class for half of the day and then half the days, meeting with businesses, working with data.
Setting up job shadowing.
Setting up job shadowing, things like that. So what does JAG do? Project-based learning and employer engagement, draw informed care back up. So the specialist is what they call that person that would be in our building, recruiting students, maintaining their progress, basically ensuring that those kids are successful is what the goal is there. So they have, it's data-heavy, so they're, you know, it's a national program, so they're collecting that data and they want to make sure that they're held to account, being connected with the businesses in our community and surrounding communities. So these specialists would recruit students into the program, talking to teachers, talking to families, talking to kids. So the student must have a minimum of six criteria for eligibility. I'll look at that here in a minute, what are those criteria? And then students placing them in that class, you know, it's an elective class, so if a senior student needs to get all seven hours filled, well, it doesn't make sense to put them in that extra class. So they do have some flexibility there. So academic criteria, this just gives you an idea of, you know, if a kid is behind, if a kid is not performing well, any of those. So we're looking at six of any of these. Personal criteria, somebody that's in special ed, has a disability, maybe health problems, family environment, maybe nobody in the family is gainfully employed, first-generation high school graduate, kind of gives you an idea of been in foster care, in the juvenile justice system.
That's six cumulative through all those categories.
Right.
Six for each one, isn't it?
So just to give you an idea of what the criteria are for what students would be eligible for the program. So Stafford has a JAG program in their school. The regional director that we visited with actually was their JAG specialist.
He started it there.
Right. And they've had a successful program. So one option would be that we would have a specialist here in our building, full-time. That's not feasible for next year. There's a fee associated with it, basically $11,000 is what we would pay to the JAG program, and they cover the personnel costs and everything. They're employed by them, but they work with our kids, they're in our building every day, they can sponsor the freshman class, they can coach basketball, they can do all those things. They do not have to be a certified teacher. Another option after talking with the regional director would be, perhaps we could share a specialist with Stafford and split that cost. They would be over here half a day and then over there half a day, and.
We do it on our own. There's a year waiting list at least, so it would be likely the 23, 24 school year before we can do it, but if we can come up with an agreement on cost and time and everything, the sharing would get us in right away.
Can you give us a rough number of how many kids this sort of thing?
See to it. How many kids are in risk?
Yeah, that's the other part of it.
Well, that's the other part of it. Right now, and that's, we went through, Mrs. Hacker and Mrs. Witt went over and they kind of brought it back to us, because they talked to them at Stafford. And just going through our students with a quick count, we could think of about 25 that we thought met the qualifications and probably could benefit from it, without dissecting each kid individually, so I would imagine that we would have 15 to 20, somewhere in there is what I'm thinking. I don't know, because I didn't know then the criteria, but the, and how many would want to do it, we can't know that until we present it to them. Haven't really talked to any students about it to let them, but I do think we would have some students that would benefit early, and I think it would grow as we went, which is why I think going. why I, I think going in halves with Stafford, if they would do that, would be a way to find out if that's something we want to grow into our own program.
Is Stafford doing seven, eighth grade, two, or just high school?
They're, yeah, they're including seven, eight, three.
So, I'm a little confused, are they currently doing it? They did it, but are they currently doing it?
They are, they are. So, the one that started it grew the program, they had, I don't know. It has over 30 kids in the program at one point, I think, we'd laughed. And he became the regional director, and then they hired somebody else, and I don't know, they're 18 right now, something like that.
And they, they tried to limit it to 15 per class, per time period. So, we'd have room, if we had them for two periods here, we'd have room for about three.
Where does the rest of the funding come from?
To grant.
Okay.
To federal, federal grant funding. The other option, we could get in right away if we paid the full amount, and that's $78,000. So, some of the schools, like Dodge City, used some SIR funding to do that, but their SIR funding was a lot bigger than ours. So, $78,000 wasn't a big percentage, but that would be the other option, if we paid the full amount. So, basically, that year waiting list is because they're waiting on the grant money to come through to cover that.
So, with having a full-time employee on staff for $11,000 seemed very beneficial, so if we would split that cost with Stafford, maybe some mileage associated with it. I've talked to their superintendent, she was going to talk with their JAG specialist and the principal and see if that would be feasible.
The only other cost associated, they go to leadership conferences and stuff with the kids, and we would pay a sub that day, I think.
And maybe some transportation.
Maybe transportation.
So, we would hopefully do half for one year and then go full-time the next year?
We will, if we do that, I think my thought would be, let's go ahead and apply to become our own program. And if it grows, we can do that. If it doesn't, maybe we can continue to go halves or see where it goes for relatively low cost.
And numbers-wise, they look at, they're looking at north of 30 is where they like to be, so, you know, if they have 18 and we have 18, that's really a one position.
Can someone in your school become a JAG specialist? If you had somebody who only had three hours or something, you're already paying, and you, that would roll in somehow?
Oh, like a teacher? Probably, well, it could, there might be options for that.
They're employed by the JAG program for that part, and there's no retirement, or there's no capers or anything that goes along with it, so I'm not sure how that would work.
I was just curious, you probably said this, but do we get to interview them for the job?
Yes.
Yeah.
We're in on the hiring process, and they are too, and we can make a recommendation to them or tell them which one our favorite is, and if that person meets the criteria, they would likely go.
I look at this as a cheap way to add a job to St. John's, and they can bring in more students.
I, with the cost we're looking at getting in for, either way, I don't see how it's necessarily a bad thing, unless we have to pay the $78,000 thing.
How would this affect the program Mr. Bryant is doing with the students now?
Mr. Bryant's is only for students who've been identified as special needs, and so it would be separate. It might include some of those kids, but it wouldn't, it wouldn't overlap them, or it wouldn't push them out of that program.
I could see it complementing what they do, yeah.
How long has this program been running?
I don't know the answer to that.
I don't know on the national level. I'm thinking of Kansas, it's been in here for about 10 years, I think.
That's about as long as I've known about it is about eight or 10 years.
And I did look into it several years ago, my previous school, before I decided to leave, and by the time I got through looking into it, I had decided that I was going to move on, so I quit looking at it, and I'd kind of forgotten about it, and then these two brought it back and kind of excited me with the possibilities.
Larned has a program, Great Bend has a couple folks there.
Yeah, two people there.
Pratt, Stafford, Kiowa County. So, it's definitely growing. So, I guess the question is, is that something we should at least pursue? I'm not asking for action tonight, but we would need to determine what's our best path forward if we apply for full-time. We're a year out, but if we can figure out a sharing arrangement with Stafford. Sounds like something we should at least continue to look at.
Yep.
We would have to take action to do a formal agreement, and I'll touch base with the JAG people and see what exactly needs to be done.
All right. Donation of property.
This is something we've been working on for a while, so we need to formally accept the donation of property from SJN Bank. There is a formal acknowledgement of that on page 56. Confirmation and acknowledgement of a gift of real estate, so this is for the building just north here, or, excuse me, just south of the library.
Any questions? It's greatly appreciated.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Debbie.
Mr. President, I need the board to approve the confirmation and acknowledgement of the gift of real estate as presented.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded that the board approved the confirmation and acknowledgement of the gift of real estate as presented. All those in favors say aye.
Aye.
The same sign. Motion carried. All right. Board member activities. Carl.
Going ahead. Just a meeting the other night, I guess. A lot of people there.
Nothing.
Thought the guys did a good job with Midland Classic, putting it on administration, staff, and everybody, and I think we're building on something that's really, that'd be good.
I enjoyed the meeting the other night also, I thought it was very informative, so kind of excited.
Debbie.
Last meeting, special op toward Paskins Learning Center, and I, they're actually at Kingwood, at the Life Skills Program there. They're still talking about whether to remain a co-op with all the services coming out of that office, or whether leaving some of the decisions up to the individual schools, like hiring the teachers and the full-time teachers, and then having the specialists and the support staff, albeit of that. Josh, do you want to add anything on that?
No, I, yeah, it's something that's being kicked around. I'm not sure that it's going to be more efficient or effective or save any money, but I wouldn't expect that anything could change on that right away.
There's two schools that seem to be really gun-tom on it. About eight schools that really aren't, and then the others just seem to not have blown one way or the other yet, but I'm not sensing that it's going to go, it's just the ones who definitely wanted or really wish it hard for it to be more localized. They want to have more control over the teachers. That's it.
All right, thanks, Debbie.
Nothing for me.
Administrative reports. Mr. White.
Hey. Finished up our KELPA testing last, this last week, and KELPA is Kansas English Language Proficiency. Certain students were retired, were required to test in that area, and so that determines which ones get extra help with the language, ELL, English, English and American programs and stuff. Sunday night, or Sunday afternoon at 2:00, we're going to have our induction of the new NHS members. Would invite all of you to attend that. It's kind of a neat ceremony, it's a good props for those kids to thank it in. We've started our online enrollment process that will go through until a week after spring break, and at that time, we'll close the online enrollment, and any students that want to change the classes that they've chosen, chosen will have to do that through Mrs. Hacker. But that started, and we've kind of gotten into the process of doing that. With that, we have a few new CTE opportunities, career and tech ed opportunities that we're looking at. Nothing set in stone, I mentioned it, some of those other classes that we look at adding. Some of you, or all of you probably know, we have a coffee shop that's in the works that'll be opening up soon. We hope to have a soft opening on parent-teacher conference night where parents can go in and get served, but that's a cooperation between our, our business essentials and our culinary, or baking and pastries class. So, it's a good cross-curricular activity, and we're looking at doing some things there. And with that, just some ideas that have come up. You have that, go ahead and put that paper over. In Mrs. Clark's business room, there are two areas. She has the room where the computers are, and then on the north side of that is just the classroom that really hasn't been utilized a lot in the past. Just, and this is just kind of throwing things out there and see what it looks like. One of the things that we could possibly do is add a student bank where students could actually deposit money so much a month or whatever that they wanted to do, and that would go into an account at a bank, but they could do it there at school. Students would have some, or some handling of some of our activities accounts, nothing out of the budget necessarily, but like fundraising accounts and stuff like that, all with oversight. So, the thought about putting a counter up against that west wall beside that, you know, I said, we were looking at a broadcasting-type class, setting up a green screen wall with a table to do any newscasts or podcasts, where we might have a former graduate come in and do an interview with him or something about what they're doing now and post that out. And also a school store, kind of just some, some basic t-shirts that might be designed by some of our classes. School swag, I guess, that several schools have started to get into, and we would look and see if we could get some, some input from local businesses on some of that. We've already done some things with Whites. You guys saw the Super Bowl end cap where our students created an end cap with the ingredients to make chili or nachos together, so Whites worked with us really well on that and allowed the students to come up with that. We're looking for a lot more ways to include our, our local resources to help with our education and kind of tie our, our community and our education together, and this would be, this would be a part of that. The tables and chairs that it shows in there with the blue tables with the white round thing is just, maybe if they, if kids had coffee and Danish or whatever, they could go in there and eat that, or it might be where we would show presentations, so. A lot of this would depend on, on what we, what, I guess, partnerships we can get with the community also. If you're wondering about the banking thing, there are schools in Kansas that have a student bank within their schools. Mr. Meyer, do you have that video? Who is this again?
Washburn Rural.
Okay.
No matter who you are or where you are, you can achieve your career goals at Purdue University Global.
Our youth of the future, we spend years educating them for success.
You know the square root of 64?
Eight.
Eight.
No, the capital is from rain.
Paris.
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 But when it comes to understanding the world of finance, have we educated our kids enough for graduation to prepare them?
Yeah. Do you know what overdraft is? Do you know what compound interest is?
A basic working knowledge of the world of finance is critical for the success of our kids as they transition into adulthood, and it's up to parents and teachers to find ways to help them learn these real-world skills. Pat Giddy, president and CEO of Kansas-based Silver Lake Bank, found a way to do just that with an idea for bringing banking to the classroom.
It was a collective approach, but the initial idea came from the bank and staff, something that we could do.
It started as a simple conversation between Pat and members of the school district, blossomed into this. A fully operational bank branch inside this local high school run almost entirely by students.
Hi, waiting for it, how can I help you?
So, it's a hands-on opportunity to understand banking, finance, investing. Kids are buying toilet tickets and signing up. Other kids are coming up here and getting change for 20, even smaller bills. Kids are coming up here and making, depositing deposits. We work with our parent-teacher organization, our student businesses, we have a coffee shop, a student store, Dino, fans in England, all their fundraising groups from here.
Never went to school to be looking for jobs, never got a job, so having these guys looking over my shoulder and rechecking my math, it's a life-saving, it'll help me focus on other things.
I've learned like money management skills and how to invest my money, and so those are just things that you can learn in a classroom.
It's just a great experience for everybody working in it, but also our customers.
They're just applied for many, especially that candidate, and I think they're probably getting some money out of the campaign, so showing them an experience of this, actually.
When you get everybody on board, such as our clubs and organizations, the table, that students are actually able to run, or they're running in the classroom, so this is perfect for that.
It's not really a hard project to do. All you're doing is setting up the school bank to operate like your existing bank does with less regulations. We would encourage anybody to give it a shot.
Okay, so that's just one of the examples of what we would be looking at with that, and Lisa and Natalie have been working on that quite a bit. Lisa's visited with the bank already. Might be some interest there. So, going forward, those are some things that we might be doing to bring those applied, applied skills into, into the school. Moving on, ACT testing for all juniors is March 1st. Again, the state pays for every junior to take it, so we give it to every junior. We'll use that data moving forward to determine any changes or adjustments, I guess, we need to make in some, some of those areas. On March 3rd, we're bringing back a job or career fair. All seventh through 12th graders will be going through the day, learning about different careers, and they're going to choose the careers that they, that they go learn about. We did a survey with students to find out what their interests were. We also included some community need jobs. So, starting in the morning, they'll go to their LS first thing and get their schedule for the day, so every student will have a schedule that they follow. We'll go through, and they'll see seven different, seven different careers, and then they'll report out on it. Be a good, interesting day, and that's something we hope to build on. Mrs. McAlister's class is doing that, the seniors are doing that as part of their, one of their senior projects, so. Got that coming back, that'll be exciting. And then we have, and I put the wrong dates on there, I guess on March 7th and 8th, I think, is when the parent-teacher conferences actually are, not 6th and 7th, but 7th and 8th, we do student-led conferences, which means when they get in the classroom, the student should be telling the parent and the teacher what they're doing in classes and what they're... The first semester, when we had parent-teacher conferences, the students were to set a goal for themselves, and whether that goal was academic, behavioral, whatever. They set a goal, and then this nine weeks of this semester, they'll review that goal, how have they done with it, do they need to make adjustments, and what do they need to do to... Do they need to make adjustments and what do they need to do to, to achieve that goal by the end of the school year? So it reinforces goal setting. They'll also be able to talk to their parents about the enrollment and what classes they plan on taking and applying. And that gives parents, you know, the reason we left enrollment open so long is gives parents time to maybe visit with their kids and make changes that they feel like the kids would need to make. So, and all of those will be scheduled. We'll send a letter out to every parent that invites them to, that basically says this is when your, when your conferences are. Look forward to seeing you. As far as activities, Midwinter Classic was a success. I think we have set up a committee. Mr. Meyer and I talked and thought maybe a committee to help that grow and be, be something that's here for a long time like it was before. And so the committees met and we're going to come up with some ways to, to ensure that that's still a good thing. A lot of people look at it as just a basketball tournament, but anytime we host something here, it's important that it goes smooth because what people see when they come in here for what we host really represents what we are as a school. We had a lot of positive comments after the Midwinter Classic the other day. A lot of the coaches and kids and parents were all happy with it. So we look forward to growing that. We will be hosting our music, our middle school music festival on the second. I didn't have this on here, but on the second, we'll be hosting that here all day. So we'll have schools in for that. Junior high basketball, our girls finished CPL champions again and the boys finished third at the league tournament. So they had a successful season. High school substate by beating Maxville with both the boys and girls on Friday night. We earned the right to host. We'll be playing Canton Galva. Normally it would have been on two different nights, but since both are playing Canton Galva, we're doing it all on Thursday night. Girls will play at six, boys will play at seven thirty.
Streaming on that?
Stream, we do have that set up for streaming. You will have to have a paid subscription and also your league passes when you come in won't get you in the door for this one.
Kasia requires the paid subscription for any postseason stuff?
It's no, it's no longer our games, it's Kasia's games. So I do have that set up to stream, but it is a paid subscription through NFHS and I'll get those links posted on, on Facebook probably tomorrow and Twitter. But just know that when you come to the game, your league passes or school passes don't get you in. High school scholars bowls was finished. We didn't quite qualify. We were really close to qualifying to move up, but they performed very well from my understanding, didn't quite make it. And we've started junior high scholars bowl with Ms. Farrell. She has fifteen kids participating in that right now. As you remember, we have high school wrestling co-op with Stafford. This year we had four students going over there. Two of them wrestled in, in their regional. Morgan Gunter qualified for girls state by placing fourth in the region. So she'll be representing us Wednesday at girls state in Salina. So if you see her out on the back floor, yeah, the one that wrestled at regionals was Caden McCandless and he just missed out on qualifying for state there. We will host the CPL high school music festival, March eighth, but we don't have it here. Barton County College always hosts our league there. We're just responsible for kind of the setup for it and stuff, but it is our host, but it's all over at the college. And then one other thing on activities that I didn't put on, I don't know when it's going to happen. We'll have some cheer tryouts coming up in March. We plan on having sixth graders join us in for junior high cheer next year. And just in the past, last year I didn't really know how the person that we were going to have coming in would do with the numbers. I'm pretty comfortable with Mrs. Bunker and what she's done with those kids. So I plan on inviting the sixth grade cheer in, or sixth graders into tryout for cheer. On my administrative, I've been going through some, to some trainings in service called Elevate Leadership. Over the past two years, I just kind of felt like I've had something that's taken a lot of my attention away from being a leader in the building that all the COVID stuff and just hasn't seemed, seemed the same. So I've gone through this Elevate Leadership and really getting a lot of good stuff out of, but one of the, one of the good things I'm getting is that we're all in the same boat and we're all finally feeling like we're getting back to normal. So I, I just want to, I've said this before to you guys, but I want to reiterate my appreciation for you allowing me to do that. It's, it's been good for me. It's refocused me on what I need to do as a leader to, to help us grow now instead of just survive. So several of you mentioned strategic planning meeting. One of the things that I observed, it got really frustrating to me because people would stand up and say, we need to do this and we need to do that. And I'm thinking, we do that, but people don't know that. So one of the things that I think we need to focus on is just making sure we tell our story, making sure we get it out there so people do know what we're doing. So if anybody has ways that we can do that, I'm open to it. I really want people to know the, the good things that we're doing in our school. So I do think that the strategic planning is an important process and it was interesting to me, but it was frustrating to know that we had people in our community who I felt like knew our school pretty well, that were, that don't really know what we're doing in these walls. So any questions? That was a lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Meyer? To continue on with that strategic planning, we, I, we went through and we looked at our vision and that one on the poster and, and on the wall. And then we looked at those five areas, students, physical plan, educational program, communication and culture and personnel and what we value in those areas, that one on the wall and then strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats, looked at those things and then came up with some common themes and as everybody left, put one of their four dots on each area they thought was important. So the common themes that have kind of come out of that were our aging facilities and the safety of our buildings, funding and budget and staffing. I think a lot of, a lot of what I heard was we have a really good staff and we need to continue to recruit great people and do what we can to keep those great people. And then communication and engaging families. So those are the, after Gary and I had a chance to visit about it. So he's, he's compiling all that data. He will come back March first and we'll talk through what information came with that meeting. He'll have some reports for us and then we'll go through each one of those common things and see what can we do to address it? What are we doing to address it? Today we talked with all of the teachers about those five key areas, about what are we doing well? What do we need to improve? So I've got a little bit of data from, from our, our staff today. I compiled that, but appreciate you all being here. We had forty-nine people, not including Alisa and I. So forty-nine active participants in the meetings and we'll have a few more next time, I think. Thought it was. Good, good information from a good mix of folks. Career Day, Blaine mentioned the secondary career day. The seniors are also planning a hands-on career day for fourth, fifth and sixth grade on March twenty-fourth. So they'll have employers come in and maybe do some more hands-on activities. Different career options for those younger kids. One thing that's not on here is I've been visiting with our neighboring superintendents about sharing opportunities, things we can cooperate and we have the wrestling cooperative. There could be an opportunity where with tennis or golf or some of those things that they had kids that wanted to come over here. Driver's ed, neither school has a driver's ed teacher this summer. So I've been talking with Mr. Smith about potential to do all of the kids in the county. So they, their kids would come here for the week of classes and then Danny would drive to their community and drive from there, but that's additional cost that we normally wouldn't have. So their school districts are talking about the potential of covering some of that cost for us. And Danny thinks he can handle it all and not, not be a detriment to our kids. Maxville has asked about the potential of if they can't find a qualified math teacher, would there be an opportunity that if our schedules were the same, could their kids in a classroom at Maxville with an adult supervisor zoom into classes here where our teacher would provide the instruction to the kids in the class and on Zoom? And we could talk about it, sure. So that idea was intriguing to me with our teacher shortage. It's not going to get any better in the near future. Are there other opportunities there where we can do things more efficiently with others or opportunities that we could have together that maybe we couldn't have separately? So nothing official there, just an idea in concept that is worth talking about. Our calendar for this year, right now we have one day additional above what was on the original calendar that we have to have. We tentatively planned on two, so I've just been telling everybody, May nineteenth is our last day of school, plan on that. So we'll see what shakes out with the weather, but right now we only need one of those two days to meet the minimum. But again, we're planning on using the two. So we'll hopefully here, maybe next meeting or in April for sure, we should be able to say no more snow days, we're, we're good with what we have. So legislative update, there's a lot of bills, frankly, just blatantly anti-public education under the guise of transparency. Why that is, I don't, I can't explain to you why there are a number of legislators that, that are trying to do what it, whatever they can to make it harder on public schools to do the work that they do. And sometimes it makes sense to people. Should parents have access to all of the curricular materials that we have in our school? Yeah. And they do, they do right now. If you as a parent want to see what's being taught in class, you can see that. I'll give you the textbook, you can look at what, what is being taught. But there's things in this parents' bill of rights for education that are very problematic. A lot of it is already in place. There's no need for a law because like I said, you can, you can review any curricular materials that we have. One thing that's very concerning to me is if, is the enforcement of this. That if anyone in the community, whether they have a child that's being educated in our district or not, thinks that, that there's a problem, that they're not, their rights are being violated, that we're not being transparent enough, that they have the right to sue and the school district would have to pay up to fifteen thousand dollars in legal fees, almost incentivizing suing the school district. That's, that's really a concern. So I, I'll send this to you in the Friday note with, with what some of those things are. So there, there's just some very concerning things going on out there that maybe at first glance would make sense, but there's no need for our teachers to post every single lesson plan online. And again, I think some of it is on purpose to discredit public education because there, there are some out there that are doing that. So that's all I had on that. We are going through some CAPERS audits. Nothing major, but they, the public employees retirement system, they look at, they go through and look at specific situations where there's a minimum number of hours that if people reach that threshold in a year, they have to be part of the public employee retirement system or required to withhold six percent of their check and contribute that. Typically our bus drivers don't fit into that and they're reviewing some of our time cards for last decade even, going back ten years and looking, did they, did this employee work more than that? Well, if they did, then we need to start collecting CAPERS for that. But some of our bus drivers, if we had to take out six percent of their check, that's a hardship for them. So I, I don't have any details on how that might shake out if we owe money from past. I know some school districts, they've had to pay if they didn't collect like they should, they had to pay the six percent that they should have collected from the employee plus the state share of another six percent. But I think they've been okay working with, we won't worry about that. We'll just worry about moving forward. So it's, it's been kind of problematic, but no details there, no major mistakes we're making. It's just that fine line between did they work too many hours this year and not enough last year? Facilities, I also didn't have on here, some things looking at for this summer. Library roof, I did visit with the library board today. There's a significant amount of money in the investments that should we be using that for things like the roof replacement? And the consensus of the board members that were there were yes, we'll use that money. They didn't take any action today. They didn't have enough board members to take a formal action, but enough indication that I think we can move ahead with that. So this is the investments that were put into the South Central Community Foundation that are earmarked for the library. So I don't have the information about how much was there originally and it was held in CD for a number of years, but in two thousand and four, the decision was made to move that into the investment pool at South Central Community Foundation and, and that was six hundred and eighty-one thousand. Between two thousand and four and two thousand and fifteen, that money just grew. So you can see since that time, in fifteen, sixteen budget year, we've made that determination that we need to pull more money out of the foundation investments to help with operation of the library. So we've been taking out forty thousand a year to help with salaries and utilities and all of that. Eighteen, nineteen, that number's bigger because we took some money out to replace the carpet. So since two thousand and fifteen, that's grown by four hundred and forty thousand and we've used two hundred and eighty-eight of it. So even over that time, we've been using it for carpet and daily operations and it's still gained a hundred and fifty thousand since two thousand and fifteen. So since it was invested down there, it's gained almost four hundred and fifty thousand. So we need to be using those funds for this library when we have things like the roof that need replaced, lighting, parking area, things like that. So I think the library board will give their blessing to that. So we're going to start.
How high was it going on the roof?
It was a hundred and thirty-five thousand. I don't know how many layers there are, so at the time they were budgeting to tear it all off and go down to the deck and redo it. But that was a couple of years ago. I don't know with inflation and the way things have changed, whether, where we're going to be at now. So, but there's, there's plenty of funds there to, to take care of those needs. Windows and HVAC, need to get an architect in here and follow the federal funding guidelines with our ESR funds. Looking at some concrete work out on Broadway. City's looking at replacing those curbs. Now would be the time to do that. We're looking at twenty to thirty thousand for that. Basically the approach up to the building and all that sidewalk on Broadway. Basically, the approach up to the building and all that sidewalk on Broadway. Then our front doors on the north side are in bad shape, we really need to replace those, so a few of those things we're looking at, that we may be asking for approval from you all here in the next couple of months.
The front doors, would that cover any of the security stuff that we talked about before?
Yeah. Yeah. So that's all I had on the board.
All right, thank you. Executive session.
I do have, need to talk personnel in about 20 minutes.
Mr. President, I move that the board go into executive session to discuss specific individuals being hired or resigning and the performance of specific employees pursuant to the non-elected personnel exception under KOMA with...
Me and Mr. White.
Mr. Meyer and Mr. White to be included, and that we return to open session at... 7:30? 7:30 in this room. Second. It's been moved and seconded that the board go into executive session to discuss specific individuals being hired or resigning and the performance of specific employees pursuant to non-elected personnel exception under KOMA with Mr. Meyer and Mr. White to be included, and that we return to open session at 7:30 in this room. All those in favor, say aye. I'm aye. Both same side, motion carried. All right, call the meeting back to order. Executive session, the student library.
Oh, how about I'll email you about it?
Okay, that works.
That works for you guys.
Okay, closing business items, resignations and contracts.
I have a recommendation to approve Mr. White's contract to roll that over for another two years.
So moved. Second. It's been moved and seconded to roll Mr. White's contract over for another two years. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Both same side, motion carried. Really wish you guys would have paused there.
That'd be over. I have a contract here for Angela Peterson to be hired as, to do the principal duties for the elementary next year.
It's moved.
It's all moved.
Second.
See what I'm talking about?
It's been moved and seconded to hire Angela Peterson to do the principal duties for the elementary next year. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Both same side, motion carried.
And I have a recommendation to approve hiring of Hannah Salee as fax teacher for next school year.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to hire Hannah Salee as the fax teacher for next year. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Both same side, motion carried. Okay. Future.